Good evening and welcome to the Huxley City Library and League of Women Voters of Ames and Story County Candidate Forum for Huxley City Council. For those of you who might not be familiar, the League is a nonpartisan political organization dedicated to encouraging citizens to be informed participants in their government on the local, state, and national levels. This is Monday, March 18th, and tonight we will meet candidates for Huxley City Council. A recording of the forum will be on the library's YouTube and also will be played on KHOI FM, that's 89.1, at a later date. I am Brenda Brink, a member of the League, and I will moderate tonight's forum. Let's begin. All declared candidates for these offices have been invited to this forum. Tonight, we have with us Cory Rigler, and they're in alphabetical order, of course, Tracy Roberts, Kevin Thompson, and Jacob Vaughn. The forum this evening will be divided into three sections. First will be the candidates' opening statements, secondly, questions from you, the audience, and finally, as there is time, closing statements from the candidates. Audience members, if you have a question to ask the candidates, please raise your hand and a runner will bring you a card. I will read the questions to the candidates. The candidates will have 90 seconds to answer, to give their response. If there are questions yet to be asked as 8:00 approaches, audience questions will take priority over closing remarks. We want every candidate to have an equal say, so candidates, please try to limit your opening remarks to two minutes each. Our timekeeper, John Klaus, will hold up a card when you have 30 seconds left and your time allotted. We'll have introductory remarks, starting with Cory Rigler.
Can everyone hear me all right? Are you going to be the mic check? Okay. I'm Cory Rigler. I've lived in Huxley for 12 years with my wife and two sons, who are in the Ballard School District. I'm running for council because I feel like I represent a different demographic than what's currently on council. Young families, 30- to 40-year-olds, with kids still in the school district. Additionally, I've lived both in the older parts of town. I used to live in Circle Drive for eight years, or off of Circle Drive for eight years. The last four years, I've lived on Ballard Drive, so in one of the newer developments, so I know people across towns. My goal as a city council representative would be to empower the boards that inform cities' policy and to make sure that we're representing the community in its entirety. I volunteered for Fieldburg Lutherans Youth Committee for three years. I've coached a bunch of people's kids for the last decade-plus, and I've met a lot of families that way. Feel like I have a good pulse on what families in the community want. I'm currently serving on the Huxley Tree Board, which is restoring the canopy that we lost in the derecho and helping fill out green spaces in town. I work at Ag Leader Technology as the Technical Support Supervisor. In my job, I solve complex precision agriculture problems. I have to collaborate with multiple department heads and supervisors. We have to build consensus on both short- and long-term projects and manage a budget for employees, projects, travel, that ranges somewhere between $500,000 and $750,000. Because of that reason, I feel like I could make a good candidate for city council for Huxley, and I appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you. And Tracy Roberts?
Hello. I made myself an outline, so I didn't get lost. I've also been in Ballard basically my whole life. I moved here when I was in sixth grade. I have two children. My daughter Heather, she has a hair salon in Cambridge, Hair by Heather. I'm giving plugs to those folks tonight. And my son, who is a real estate person at Precision Real Estate in Des Moines. And then my grandbaby, Mavy, who's the light of my life. She makes my day happen every day. And my significant other, John, who's here in the audience. I work for the Department of Health and Human Services. I've worked there for 36 years, and I lead a team of 18 very dedicated staff. And we train eligibility workers across the state of Iowa. I also have a commercial cleaning business that I do in my spare time. I've always been in public service, and that's really what drew me to being on the city council. I've been on your council for the last 12 years, so this vacancy would be just for an additional two years. And that's really what drew me is public service. I like the small-town feel. I like to know the people we serve, and I want to keep it small but do smart growth within Huxley. So we've worked really hard over the past 12 years to keep a balanced budget. We have not tried to raise taxes. We don't go out and bond for things, so our debt has not increased. I was hoping to check with our city administrator today before I came, and I didn't. We either have an A or an A-plus bond rating for the city of Huxley, so I'm pretty proud of the work we've done. Really, it's just, I just really, I'm here to meet the needs of the residents. I'm not here for any personal gain of my own. The money that we are paid to be on city council is not the reason most of us up here volunteer to do this job. If you've noticed, Ankeny's kind of moved towards North Pope to Almond, and I really don't want that to happen to Huxley. I want us to be able to control our growth, and so that's one of the reasons I decided to come back and try again for these next two years. And then finally, I just want to mention to the group, because I don't know that you're all aware, but there is a Facebook group out there that not all the candidates were allowed to join, so that was really disappointing to me. But for those of you who do have questions that we're asking in that group, and maybe some of us couldn't answer those, please feel free to stick around or ask those questions tonight, and I'd be glad to answer those. I'm honest, I won't tell you one thing and do something else, and just know that I'm here to represent your interests and not mine.
Thank you, Tracy. And Kevin?
Good evening. Kevin Thompson. I grew up in Slater, graduated from Ballard in '93. I've got three kids. I think we moved to Huxley, seems like 10 years ago, but I think it's been closer to 20. I've lived in a couple of different parts of town. I've known Cory. I think we met at Pielberg, didn't we?
Yeah.
I think he's a great candidate, so very good, very good presentation. My son's in the Army in North Carolina, 82nd Airborne, very proud of him. Daughter is going to Appala, and I got a junior here at Ballard. So I farm, and I also work at Ankeny Sanitation. I've been on the co-op board. I was appointed here two years ago, and I kind of really enjoyed my time. I was like, I didn't run this last time. I know some people asked some questions, but I wanted some people that wanted to be on run and get elected, so that's why I didn't run. And then I got asked to be, if I'd do it again for two more years, and I said yes. And so that's how I got up here. I've enjoyed it. I think I bring some things to the table that some others don't. It is a learning curve, and I think what we've done the last two years, I like to kind of follow through and see it through. I really enjoyed Fairway. I mean, when I first moved here, it was kind of like, where do we get groceries? You know? I like our cartwash. I like general insurance. I try to do business at town, you know? And I want to see more businesses in that district down there grow and be able to enjoy our community. So I'm very proud to say I live in Huxley. So with that.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Jacob, your turn.
Yeah, I'm Jacob. I would like to thank everyone that came out tonight, and also the Women's League of Voters and the Huxley Library for putting this on. Yeah, I ran back in November, and I chose to participate. I've been to every meeting since like September or something. And I think I also do a different demographic of younger, and I lived in Huxley and I raised a family here. That's why I moved here, to raise a family here, and I love everything about it. So I'm running, and I ran in November, the same to pretty much do something for Huxley and get a chance to put my name on it, so.
Okay. Thank you. So I will be reading questions from the audience. Barb has been helping me, so we don't have too many due, because we have a lot of questions. And candidates, you have 90 seconds to give your response to each question, and we'll be rotating through. So Tracy will have the first, and then we'll just go down the line and back around, rotate around. The first question is, why should I vote for you?
That's a great question, why you should vote for me. Again, I'll go back to my history here for the last 12 years. I think we've done good things for Huxley. I would echo what Kevin said. We had a little bit of pushback from Fairway. Before we came on, there was, there's been a couple grocery stores. Initially, the previous council actually gave $300,000 to a grocery store with no strings attached, and we lost that grocery store. So with Fairway, we've done a really good thing, bringing that to town. They do a lot for our community, and they really give back. I really care. I honestly care about this community. I think, over the past 12 years, I've maybe missed six meetings. I really try to make it important. It's important to me to come here and listen to what folks want. And again, it's not for me, so I'll give an example. We were going to put a pond in over at Nor Calsum, and that made everybody really upset. And I thought, well, that's a great idea, we'll do the pond. Until everybody showed up, and they didn't want the pond. So again, I voted no for the pond, because that's what the people of Huxley wanted us to do. So I really, I have no reason, there's no hidden agenda. If you vote for me, it's just here to represent you. I have good experience with the budget, with CIP and with TIF, so I would love, I imagine we'll get TIF questions. But I have a good understanding of TIF. I think if you can use it correctly, which in the beginning, I don't think Huxley did a good job of that, but we have done a good job of making sure that everybody gets a piece of that money when we do TIF agreements. And that's something I feel strongly about, and I think that's very misrepresentative for the Huxley. I think people think, if we do TIF, we're writing that check to the developer, and that is not at all true. Everybody gets a piece of that money, the city, the schools. Where before the building was put up, you had zero dollars coming into the city. So at this rate, you get a portion. It's very hard for a developer to take on all that debt without having some agreement with the city. And they don't get that TIF money unless buildings actually come up out of the ground, and we start getting taxes from that. So I think that's a misunderstanding for the city, and I think I've talked a lot, so I will let somebody else talk.
All right, Kevin? And I'm not Huxley resident, so when I say, why should I vote for you, it's the audience.
Well, you're probably going to repeat a lot of things that we're saying, but like I said, I've been on here two years, and we've had some issues come up where the room is full of citizens here, and then there's other nights, there's maybe one or two people. And I wish more people would come to every meeting. I know it's hard, everybody's busy, but when we get those amount of people here, we know there's something that we need to listen, open our eyes and stuff. So I guess, I feel like I've been on different sides of things, and I try to use, you know, good judgment and try to treat everybody fairly. I don't want to give my buddy a 10-foot fence, and then you can't do a 10-foot fence. So just, I mean, you gotta, you gotta follow the laws, you gotta follow the regulations. Are we willing to make some changes as a council? I mean, if things make good common sense, you know, I'm willing to do some of those things, so. No, I'm proud of Huxley, and like I said, I've got older parents, I've got younger kids, I got, you know, everybody's needs change as you move through life, and so we have to keep that stuff in consideration.
All righty. And Jacob?
Yeah, so I would say to vote for me, because I would actually listen. I wouldn't force you to get a sidewalk on a street that you don't want a sidewalk on. Another thing, too, is I would also, I wouldn't TIF as much, because I'm not for that. So, thank you.
And Cory?
Yeah, reason to vote for me, I alluded to it in my introductory statement, the average age in Huxley, at least according to last census, is 34.8 years old. I'm closer to that, with all respect to all existing council members, than some of the rest of our council members, so I do think I represent a different demographic. Additionally, while I don't have government policymaking experience, I do that at work in the precision ag world with large money-making type decisions. So it's not that I'm a complete novice to decision-making or complex troubleshooting. In my job, there's a lot of finding common ground. I would actually celebrate the current council. There have been a couple hot issues that they alluded to, and I do think that they do a good job listening to constituent, or not constituents, people when they come in and trying to make sure that everyone's heard. Obviously, issues can be polarizing, and sometimes not everyone's going to be happy, but that would be something that I intend to do as well. I'm well-involved in sports and schools and volunteer opportunities. I see a fence line and/or Friends of Huxley representative out there, but I think I've been at every trail cleanup since its origin. I've been at fundraisers for the library and for the parks, so this community is important to me. I try and give back my time where I can and be involved, and I feel like I have a good pulse on what people in the community want. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question. We'll start with Kevin on this one. Describe your process to prepare for a city council meeting.
Was this two years ago or the current date?
Well, you could choose.
That's an inside joke. We get our council minutes usually on Friday, so at some point between Friday and Tuesday, I think the council member needs to do diligence and freedom, and if you have questions, you reach out to David or whoever you need to ask, so you're prepared for Tuesday night's meeting. Do I do that every Friday and Saturday? Probably not. But it is, some pages are 180 pages long sometimes, so I do try to dig into it, read it, and then get my questions, you know, email or call Dave, and be prepared. We do a pretty good job now doing work sessions every other month, so we can get ahead of big items, talk, you know, talking points and decision-making, because, you know, the last thing we want to do as a council is vote on something we haven't talked about. So getting the right people in the right places. We've just hired a city clerk finance director, which is huge for us as citizens. And with David coming on board, he's been a blessing to you. So putting the right people in the right places is a very, very important part of our job. We don't want to micromanage them, but just give them the guidance and make sure we're moving in the right direction.
All right. Thank you. And Jacob, describe your process in preparing for a city council meeting.
I would read the packet and go through it, and then do some research and talk to the city administrator and talk to the people that are in that field, and then go from there. And then hopefully have a discussion with the council members before voting, and yeah, that's how I would go about it.
Okay, thank you. Cory?
Yeah, obviously, I'm not on city council, so I'm going to project what I think I would do with what I currently do, which is when they send out the meeting minutes in advance, I try and read, prepare for what I can, based on the issues at hand, if at all possible. It sounds like you guys get them Friday. Third Street issue, maybe you go down to Third Street and try and get a pulse on what those people want. So trying to understand both the issues and then the people that it's going to affect and what their opinions are.
Tracy?
Thanks. So same thing that Kevin said, we get our packets Friday. I'll usually scan the packet initially on Friday, go over it again, probably more likely on a Sunday, and then what you alluded to. So the Third Street has been a hot topic for us, so I've walked the area and checked that out, so that we're prepared for questions. But we do take our time and talk about things in a work session, so that we're not rushed through and blindly. In the past, things have popped up on the agenda where we were not prepared to make a vote, and that was very disappointing. So we have really worked hard to make sure that we are all aware of the topic that we're going to talk about. Sometimes if you show up at a council meeting, you will think we're just flipping through that agenda pretty quick, but it's because we've done the homework beforehand, and we try to leave room for people to ask questions when they are in the meetings. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and we'll start with Jacob. What do you consider when approving TIF? Or what would you consider when approving TIF? How do you make sure the cost of city services to the new development are covered, utilities, roads, police, fire, et cetera?
Well, for what, I would, if I was to approve anything for TIF, I'm a person that's not really for TIF. I think that if we do single-family homes, we should subsidize a tax to the person buying a brand-new home or building the house. And then the other aspect is putting TIF more towards businesses, bring jobs and things to the city. So I would approve more if I was to do it, approve something that would benefit the whole city, not just the single-family homes.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to read this one again, because it's...
I appreciate that.
What do you consider when approving TIF, or if you were to approve TIF? How do you make sure the cost of city services to the new development are covered, utilities, roads, police, fire, et cetera?
Yeah, so in an effort to better understand this, preparing to run, I sat through the Iowa Department of Management. They have it online, so all of you guys can watch it if you're super interested. It's about 90 minutes. The certification for it, I'm still not an expert, I won't claim to be, obviously, sitting council members have hands-on experience with it. I think in Huxley, we need to try and be competitive with neighboring communities. I know that we've given out different percentages for different projects. I think it's important to be transparent and consistent with how we're doing that, project to project, and builders, to incentivize builders to continue developing Huxley in a responsible way, but not greater than what our neighboring communities are doing.
Okay. Tracy, do you want me to read the question again?
Sure.
What do you consider when approving TIF? How do you make sure the cost of city services to the new development are covered, utilities, roads, police, fire, et cetera?
So I think we have taken a huge turn in the way we do TIF, as opposed to the way TIF had been done in the past. And so currently, we put money in everybody's bucket. It's two buckets. I always think of it as three, it's two buckets. Developer in the city, right? So as things get built up off the ground and the tax base comes in, everybody gets a portion of that money. The builder only gets a certain dollar amount that we set into TIF back, so they can never get more money than that back. It's not a check that we write to a developer. If they don't meet those guidelines, they don't get that money back. So in the past, people had a really hard time, if you heard, someone's getting 100% TIF. Well, no one ever gets 100% TIF, and it's, that 90-minute course, that's excellent. It took me probably two terms to really start understanding TIF. And how do I make sure everybody gets what they need? I would say that's how we do the buckets, putting money in everybody's bucket, so that that is growing. I think a lot of people would not be able to do the development if we did not have the TIF grants. Banks just don't want to take that risk with developers, and it's pretty hard for somebody to get collateral to take on that kind of a loan when they're doing a development. I hope that answered the question.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, what do you consider in the approval of TIF? How do you make sure the cost of city services to the new development are covered, utilities, roads, police, fire, et cetera?
Once again, two years ago, when I kind of got appointed, I kind of got interested, because I've heard stories about how bad it was for the city and everything. So I come in pretty adamant that I'm not going to vote for TIF, there's no way. But as you sit down, and I can't remember the name of the company that we used, they put it on a nice big spreadsheet, and you can give different examples of how much you want to give them, and back and forth. I'll tell you what, it does do something for Huxley. It's not bad. Now, some of them, early, early ones, we did give back everything to the developer, and we've realized that's not the right thing to do. And so I think it definitely has a place here. Some people argue that people will develop in Huxley without TIF, and I don't know if I could argue that right or wrong. I think Huxley is a very attractive place to live. We have 69 and Interstate very, very close. So am I for Tiffing every project? No, but that's a case-by-case basis, and we've really tried to get those percentages down to where the developers still have a lot of skin in the game. So I guess, it's really changed my mind by being on the council, and thanks for taking time to look at that, because a lot of people just got a bad taste in their mouth. Some of the towns that aren't using it, I don't think understand how to use it, and so they don't use it. So that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you. There's a city ordinance that areas of certain density need a second exit, but New Horizons Park does not follow this. Can we get this fixed? Let's see, and we're starting with, back to Cory.
Me, that's great. I admittedly, I would have to look up the ordinance. I know it's on the city's website, so the resources are there. I'm not particularly familiar with that. I think like all of the city council issues, if someone's asking for an easement or something different than what's written in the ordinance, send a packet or send information to city council ahead of time, let them discuss it and make an informed decision. I've seen examples, you guys probably don't want to bail me out, since you get to answer this question next, but on the south end of town, where it didn't make sense to continue a sidewalk that went to nowhere, and they allowed them to keep it gravel. I do think that as a whole city council tries to make common-sense decisions, that's for the betterment of the community. So if it makes sense to have an easement for that particular scenario, then I think council, I don't want to speak for you guys, but would be open to that discussion and trying to make a reasonable decision, if that's what the public wants.
Okay. And the question from the audience was, there's a city ordinance that areas of certain density need a second exit, but New Horizons Park does not follow this. Can we get this fixed?
So I couldn't bail you out if I tried, because I think it has to do with it being privately-owned land, and maybe how it was developed at that point to begin with, but I would have to look that up to be sure. But yeah, we could certainly look into if there's another way to make that flow. I know the road that's immediately behind there is a main collector, and so I don't know if there is a way from one end of the New Horizons to go into that road or not, but, I mean, we can always look at things, and things can be changed, right? You just have to, you have to either look to see if it's state code or city code, and then find out if you can make those changes. So be willing to look at it if at all possible. I hope that was a good enough answer, and sorry I couldn't bail you out, Cory.
Okay. Kevin, there's a city ordinance that areas of certain density need a second exit, but New Horizons Park does not follow this. Can we get this fixed?
So I kind of see what Tracy says. I guess that's why we have a planning and zoning board. I rely heavily, I'm not an expert on every topic that comes up here, and we all have to kind of play our piece in here, our piece of the pie. And I guess I would lean on, why did Planning and Zoning approve something like that? Be my question, okay? Is it private or public? Does that make a difference? We usually have attorney in here for questions, so I mean, a lot of these things, we'll get information on to make an informed decision with what we get told by Dave and other people. So can it be fixed? Absolutely. The big thing usually is who's going to pay for it? Is it going to be the city pay for it? Is the development going to have to pay for it? So I mean, that's what a lot of the questions up here is, kind of like the Third Street project. They probably should have had a sidewalk in originally, I don't know sure why they didn't, but now we're like, who's going to pay for it if we go ahead and do it? So some of these things, you've got to deal with head-on when they come up, so I guess you take each situation as it comes up and try to get the best information and decision made if we can make.
Okay. Jacob, this is a question from the audience. There's a city ordinance that areas of certain density need a second exit, but New Horizons Park does not follow this. Can we get this fixed?
Well, I'll talk to Dave to see if we can put it on the agenda for one, and then the second thing is, figure out how we can fix it and who's paying for it, like they said, and go from there. Because yeah, if we don't own the land, we can't do anything with it, so.
Okay, thank you. Next question from the audience, and we'll start with Tracy. The city council is responsible for managing a multimillion-dollar budget. What is your experience in budget management?
Great question. That's actually one of the reasons I got on city council, was to assist with budget experience. Like I said, I worked for the state for 36 years, and I do manage 18 people. I am part of the budget discussions at work. I don't manage the budget, I'm not claiming that I manage the budget, but we do have to take into effect, and we're hiring positions. We look at everything and the future needs. And so part of the budget planning, can you repeat it? Because I think I'm talking in a circle. Just what do I know about budgets? Is that the short version?
Yeah. What is your experience in budget management?
Thank you, okay. So every year, we go through the city budget. We go through it line by line. We decide what things we can do, what we see as our revenue incoming each year, taxes, when we're going to get tax money coming in. And we try not to overspend, but we have not been able to do a good job on our CIP plan, and that's something that I wish we could do a better job of, because we don't have extra money, so we don't spend money before we get it. So I guess my experience with the budget is just annually going through that line by line, making sure we're not overspending for your folks.
Okay. And the short question is, what is your experience in budget management?
Well, on my personal level, farming, I mean, that's, I do quite a bit of planning there, so I understand the ins and outs of that. I've been on the co-op board. It used to be part of Iowa, now it's key co-op, so I was exposed to a lot of financial information there and the process of going through. Now, did I do the budget? No. But you learn how to work with the department heads, you know, make sure they're getting their needs met, and just, you know, making sure the numbers are accurate. Like I said, two years ago, I would say I wasn't very impressed with the budget. Like I said, two years ago, I would say I wasn't very impressed with the budget. I think we've came a long ways, and I really, I really think in the last probably three months, we have done some CIP projects with some money that we found that we didn't know we had. So I mean, knowing those numbers are huge, and that goes to your city manager, Dave, has done a great job with that. So we've got a couple of new police cars you're going to be seeing. I think we bought some street, picking for the streets, and Splashpad, I think, is going to come to fruition. We kind of fought that a little bit, I'll be honest. I still haven't gave you any money yet, but I told her I would. But that was a project that, you know, the young families I could really see doing. I'm not going to go to Splashpad now, so to me, it's not useful. But I understand the point in Huxley for the young families and kids. So I think we're really, really close. I think it's going to get done. So that's part of all that budgeting. It's really, it's a process.
Okay. And Jacob, what is your experience in budget management?
I don't have that much experience with budget managing. I do own a small business, handyman business, and I have to manage my own budget to like make sure I'm making a profit or not going over quotes and stuff. So that would be my experience with it.
Okay. Cory, what is your budget management experience?
Here we go. Yeah, I mentioned it. I think Tracy and Kevin said similar things. I won't pretend that the entire department budget is on me, but it's me, a co-supervisor and a manager. We have a budget that ranges between $500,000, $750,000 for both employees, capital projects, discretionary travel, or resolution trips. So at a city level for planning projects, not exactly, but at a engineering developmental level, future projects or capital projects to move businesses forward, I do have that experience at my work. I'm not a finance expert. I'm super appreciative of my wife in the crowd for personal finance. I'm hoping that some of the boards, when they come together with budget proposals or, you know, grant proposals and things, that with the assistance of Dave and the other board members, that collectively, we can use our financial acumen to make sound decisions. So yeah, I have it in a professional setting from a agriculture perspective. I've not done it on a city level yet, so.
Okay. Thank you. Time's a-wastin' here. Next question from the audience. Huxley's largest growing demographic is young families. Our council doesn't reflect that. Do we need more diversity and different perspectives in decision-making? And I think we're to Kevin for first.
I was young once. I didn't have any money when I was young, but it definitely doesn't hurt. And I think that's where Cory's going to shine here, is he has been on the tree and board and done some things and getting involved in the community and stuff. So whether you make it this time or next time, please run again. But as if you're saying we're older, I'm not sure we are, but I feel young. But I have friends with kids, and I listen, and I mean, so I mean, the heart, you know, that's a thing that, it's a feeling thing, but getting up here and saying you're going to do everything for the young family versus, you know, the older generation, I mean, it's a balancing act. Every meeting's a balancing act. So I think just having the experience in life is huge, you know? So I don't think it's a big positive or big negative, I guess, so.
Okay. Thank you. Jacob, do we need more diversity and different perspectives in decision-making?
I'd say yes to that. I'm in my 30s. I have a kid that's three, so I support the Splashpad. And I also, I think that it would bring the younger families, like you would see that aspect instead of just the older people side of things, so. Because like, you go to, I live in a newer neighborhood, and like, we all sit around, and we have our kids, they're playing on the playground, and we're like, oh, hey, how's he doing? Oh, he's potty training and stuff. And so it sort of, you have a different, like, point in your life, and I just feel like diversity on the council would be nice, so.
Okay. Thank you. And Cory, do we need more diversity and different perspectives in decision-making on the council?
Yeah. It's hard not to sound biased. So I reference the age statistic. That being said, years of experience count for something, too. So I'm not going to pretend that Tracy or Kevin can't relate to what it's like to have a family. But what I will say is, me being in my 30s as well, I'm willing to spend a lot of time around 30 and 40-year-olds, because those are my peers. I have some other peers who are my neighbors, who are slightly older than me, maybe a year or two out in the audience right now. So that perspective's not lost on me either. I think one of the things that a city council representative does is try and make sure that they're collecting the entire community's feedback on issues. So just based on my age demographic, I'm not saying someone's qualified because of their age, but I think the amount of time I'm going to spend around different ages is going to be influenced based on just who I am as a person, so.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll hit the TIF again. Audience member says, we've used TIF.
Oh, I'm sorry. Case in point. I need you to ask it again, please.
Okay. Do we need more diversity and different perspectives in decision-making?
Thank you. So I would slightly disagree that we, I don't want to say we don't, like, it's always a good thing to have varied opinions, right? But I think for me, my role where I work with human services is I do see that diversity. And Huxley also has an older population as well. But again, I don't think it matters what I want, it's what our constituents want. I think that's who we need to listen to. And I do think, just so you know, everybody's very supportive of the Splashpad, it was just finding the money for it.
Thanks. Sorry. Okay. Next audience question. What is the largest opportunity you see for the Huxley community, and what steps need to be implemented for that opportunity to be realized? Jacob, we'll start with you.
Can you read that?
Yep. What is the largest opportunity you see for the Huxley community, and what steps need to be implemented for that opportunity to be realized?
I think growth is a big one. So we're in between Ankeny and Ames, and we have, they're closing down, they're redoing the bridge, so you're going to have a lot of people driving through town here. And so one, making that whole, like, strip would be a really good opportunity, especially before the bridge, for people to be like, oh, this is a really nice city, and I would like to move here. And so that would bring more growth to the thing. I feel like we're like 30 minutes from Des Moines, roughly. It takes me 33 minutes, and we're close to Ames, and so it's a really good family town, so. Yeah, I just feel like, you know, keep that going.
Okay. Thank you. Cory, what is the largest opportunity you see for the Huxley community, and what steps need to be implemented for that opportunity to be realized?
I hate to steal John Murphy's thunder here, but updating our comprehensive plan. For those of you who've read it, it's outdated. Our population exceeds it. Things the comprehensive plan would include are finishing out some of our parks and green spaces, which are things, obviously, being on the tree board, I'm super passionate about. But as Tracy alluded to, it's not just what I want, it's what everybody in the community wants. And I think a comprehensive plan, and I know there are efforts to update that and make it reflective of current budget and future year's growth, but having that and being transparent with the community about what we're looking to do in the next three years and five years from now, to develop some of these spaces, is going to allow the community to provide that feedback and come to council meetings and be informed. So I think that would be the most impactful because of its all-encompassing nature of, you know, new development projects.
Okay. Tracy, what is the largest opportunity you see for the Huxley community, and what steps need to be implemented for that opportunity to be realized?
So I think one of the largest things for Huxley is growing our business. We've done a great job with our residential, but we need to grow our businesses. And in order to do that, we have to bring, we have to attract businesses to this town. And I think more travel through 69, like you guys were alluding to, is very important. I think our CIP plan will make a huge difference. And again, like, look at Flight, they've got us on the map, so I think it's important. We need more restaurants in this town, honestly. And I think the Gardner Development South Town will really help with that. Thanks.
Okay. Kevin, what is the largest opportunity you see for the Huxley community, and what steps need to be implemented for that opportunity to be realized?
Like I said, we have the Gardner Development down south is a huge opportunity. There's a lot of acres, lots for businesses to come to town. The people you guys put on council over the last 10 or 15 years have done a great job. The Huxley Business Park, it took a long time to fill up, but it has filled up, and they're growing again. And I think we are focusing a lot on the commercial businesses, trying to bring them to town so we can stay in shopping town. So I don't know what the next thing is. It's hard to see past Gardner's thing, but I'm guessing we're going to go to 210. We're going to keep going, hopefully in a slow managed process. The Ames Economic Development Committee has been a huge, I think, help in doing some of this. First time I was on there, we were going to pay them $15,000 to do what? And we've rode them pretty hard, and I think some of them are here tonight. And thank you for being persistent and helping our community with some of the land and different things we have available for businesses and spreading our name out there. It's been really fun to work with them, you know? So I think there's a great opportunity here. Like I said, I don't know what the next big thing's going to be. We've got a lot of ground to fill right now, so.
Okay. Thank you. Next question from the audience. What are your plans to invest in the older sections of Huxley? We'll start with Cory.
Yeah. I'll turn my mic on. I apologize. Splashpad is one of the things that is going into the older part of Huxley. I guess it depends on where you draw the line for older part of Huxley. I'm thinking the part of town I used to live in before I moved into new development. But yeah, Splashpad's going over there. We have some great businesses. Staley's Cinnamon Rolls are out there. We have fence lines down that way. The bike trail, city council is awesome, and they approved some of the TIF funding to continue the bike trail that continues Heart of Iowa Trail from Slater and then east of Huxley. I realize it's closed for the bridge. But in addition to that, Tree Board has gotten a grant recently that, well, I think Kevin just said it was approved today, for some park trees in the meeting immediately before this. So we've done right-of-way plantings, but replacing some of the trees that were taken out with the Durate Show, so improving green spaces there. And according to Iowa DNR, that helps with both economic development as well as just city culture. So I think there's a lot of value in all of those things.
Okay. Tracy, what are your plans to invest in the older sections of Huxley?
So I think Main Street is really where we want to, where I'm considering the older part of town. I know Dave Jensen has done an awesome job with his building on the corner. He did that on his own without the city. I would like the city to be able to help fill in some of those spots with our businesses, so clear down to where you're talking, where the Splashpad would be, which is where the basketball courts are now. But I would like to see the city be able to help folks get there. And I'm assuming on Gardner's Development, he'll want to assist with that, too, because that will drive right into his newer development.
Okay. Kevin, what are your plans to invest in the older sections of Huxley?
Well, that's where Jeff Peterson and some of the streets guys come in. I know they look at the sanitary with cameras and see if there's problems, and they, you know, they're figuring out, come to council, hey, we need to do an overlay, we need to tear the street out, this kind of thing. So far as that goes, I rely on them heavily. That's their job, to bring it to us, say, hey, this is what we need to do. And then we plan accordingly, you know, two- to five-year plan, how are we going to pay for it? And I think with Dave's guidance, I think that we're going to get some more projects done. So we, I know some people complain about them, but they're trying to maintain the streets along with the new ones, so. And I think a big thing for the new developments, we're finding out, is, you know, we need to put some rock underneath the concrete, do some things to make our streets last longer. Ask great to get it done, get it done fast, but then it's our baby in 10 years, and we got to repave it. So there's a lot of things that, like I say, I'm no expert, but I'm learning, and just we got to make wise decisions up here, hold the developers responsible, drainage issues, sidewalks, bike trails. A lot of this stuff should not be an issue. It should be done upfront and just follow the procedures.
Okay. Jacob, what are your plans to invest in the older sections of Huxley?
I'm not still here, Thunder. I would work with Jeff Peterson as well, and I would figure out which roads need to be redone and also try to get businesses down Main. We have Prairie Fest down Main Street, and it's like where a lot of people go, and it would be nice to see a few more businesses down there for when we do have that festival. So that's what I would focus on redoing the roads, because there's some bad ones in town. And I would also focus on putting some, maybe another business or so down Main.
We've got everybody, right? Next question from the audience. Huxley residents are facing high property tax rates. What would you do in the next two years to address this issue? Would you support lowering the property tax levy? And we are ready, I think, Tracy, are you first? I'll take it.
So until we get some of our debt paid down, we, I'm not in favor of increasing. I think we can maintain. People always talk about if you increase, then you can back it off later. I don't think that ever happens. So I know as we get some of our debt service paid down, we would have the ability to lower that, I'm looking at Dave, to the, a little bit lower percentage. I'd have to look exactly what that is, but we're not maxed out, and I don't want us to go any higher.
Okay. Kevin?
Yes, Kevin Thompson would like his property taxes lowered also. I guess my choice is to move if I don't like it. I've stayed where I'm at. You can search where I'm, I've had high property taxes, but I think it's well worth what we get. So we are going to try to hold them steady, not raise them. I think that's huge. I mean, the wages we have gave our employees here, I think, has been very, very generous. We've been able to keep good employees, and I think part of that is you just got to look at the big picture. We've got good schools, we've got fairly decent roads. I mean, we've got the nice facilities. I know we want to do a new Public Works Building at some point. That's going to be a big number, so be prepared. Other than that, I guess I want our employees to have good, you know, nice things. And so I don't like how high they are either, but Story County has high taxes.
All right. Jacob, would you support lowering the property tax levy? How would you address it?
Well, probably, I pay high taxes, too, being in a new development. I would keep them the same, best as I can, and go through the budget and see where we, if we could even do that. But sometimes when you go lower, it hurts your city, so.
Okay. Cory, what would you do to address the high property tax rates? Would you support lowering the property tax levy?
Yeah, I thought that was on the agenda recently as a discussion point. I don't know the finances as detailed. I know they're trying to get everything up to date. I don't know that that's a feasible thing. We would all love, I think everyone would love lower taxes, but I don't think that's feasible currently. Dave's kind of giving a half-nod over there, suggesting that that's true. So yeah, everyone would love to lower them, but I think maintaining is a reasonable goal, and I'd echo Kevin's point. We have good schools that people open and roll in. I think it's important to consider what people want as far as maintaining both schools, roads, those sorts of things. And while we all love to say we could lower taxes, we want to make sure that we're maintaining the quality of life that people moved here for and the reason that people stay in Huxley. So transparently, I think maintaining is a more realistic goal than actually lowering them.
Okay. Thank you, candidates. Next audience question. Do you support the streaming or recording of meetings where salary is not discussed? So we'll start with Kevin.
Repeat that when we're talking.
Do you support the streaming or recording of meetings where salary is not discussed?
Yes, and once again, I think we're supposed to be doing this live for two years, and I don't know if we're quite there yet. Are we, are we really close? We, Huxley says it's a pay for all this equipment. No, I think it's a great thing, then people can see it, you know, live or go back and view it. I'm not, I'm a very straightforward person. You ask me something, I'm going to tell you the answer. I'm not going to hide anything. So I guess I, I'm not, yeah, I'm all for it.
All right. All right. Jacob, do you support the streaming or recording of meetings where salary is not discussed?
Yeah, when I ran back in, for the last November election, I said I support doing live events, Facebook Live. They're, like everyone's on their phone, like everyone has a smartphone, so it would better communicate the citizens. And if there was a problem or something that they're like, oh hey, we need to go talk and get people in here too.
Okay. Corey, do you support the streaming or recording of meetings where salary is not discussed?
Yeah, I, I think we're all probably on the same page. The, the infrastructure's there, it's getting it, getting it up and running. I, I don't wanna speak for everyone, y'all, everyone's pretty much answered. But the goal is transparency for the community and making sure that people can, can be informed on the decisions we're making. I'll also encourage people to, to look at the meeting notes. I can't remember who took those over, but they've been awesome and it reflects all of the votes that people have, so. But yes, in a, in a short version, I'm also in support of streaming.
And Tracy?
Yes, absolutely. As you can see, we have put equipment in here. There was some problem with the equipment not working together nicely as we anticipated, which was unfortunate, which is why there is a delay of this happening. But it's been in the plan for about a year and a half at least.
All right. And candidates, describe your approach to resolving conflicts so that consensus can be reached. And we're to Jacob, I think, first now.
I think having a discussion with, so like if there was something that I was not for and maybe Thompson or Regler was for, you have discussion, you sort of try to make a boundaries of like, okay, maybe I can vote for this if it's gonna approve this.
Okay. Corey, describe your approach to resolving conflicts so that consensus can be reached.
Yeah, th- this is one of the things that I, I do for my job regularly in customer support and, and troubleshooting. So, I think with trying to build a consensus, you're, you're listening to both sides of an issue or sometimes there's multiple sides to an issue. You try and look for the common ground, so make sure everyone's heard. You try and identify what common ground there is and then you make the decision that's in the best interest of the most amount of people or in city council's case, in the best interest of the community that we're representing.
Tracy?
I would echo the same thing there many times when we didn't agree up here, but I think you just have to work through, lay out your game plan, tell each other why you agree or, or disagree. And at some point, sometimes you have to agree to disagree. I liked what Corey said, it's really, again, not about us, it's what benefits most of the community. So, that's where I try to make my decision.
Kevin?
I'm gonna reference work sessions, again, just getting ahead of the fire instead of putting fires out. I've been at a lot of jobs where all you do is fight fires and you never get ahead of it. So, I think this council and this whole city staff has got a lot better with getting things in front of us before it's a, it's a do-or-die situation. Like at Duratio, I wasn't here for that, I'm sure that was a lot of fun to handle for the city, but that's something out of our control. But I've been up here several different topics. There was a goat, fence, sidewalk, and everybody had their opinion. We let each other talk, once in a while somebody will say, hey, let me finish. But I think just respecting each other's opinions and not talking for too long. How much time do I have left? He's not even laughing. But just listen to each other's opinion and then, like you say, come and, come into a consensus. We have tabled a few items since I've been up here and it's not a fun or easy issue to do. But I think the council at some points realizes, hey, we are not ready to make this decision and we'll just table it until the next meeting. And I think city works slow, we don't, we don't, we're not like a business where we just go out and grab whatever we want, who we want. So, it's a slow process and I've really enjoyed it, so.
Okay, thank you, candidates. We're looking, getting down to the end here, so we'll do two more. We won't have time for closing remarks, but we have a lot of good questions here, so. Let's see now. Lost track. Is it Corey? I think it's Tracy. Jacob, we'll get you, we'll get you this time. What does the word integrity mean, mean to you?
Someone that, well, that's a good one. Someone that just like, you know, puts his, his life on sleeve, I don't know, like. I would say integrity is some, someone that just stands up for what they believe in and what is right.
Corey, what does the word integrity mean to you?
Yeah, it's someone who, who does what they say they're gonna do. They're honest, they're transparent about what their goals are, what they intend to do, and then they follow through with that. They admit when they make a mistake, so.
Okay. Tracy, integrity?
I would agree, it's honesty, it's being transparent, saying what you're gonna do, doing what you're gonna say and being accountable for your actions.
Okay, Kevin?
They've said it all, I mean, just like I said, it is being honest and, you know, doing what's, you know, what is right. We all know whether it's right or wrong, I've raised some kids and I still, the one doesn't understand right from wrong, yeah, but we're working on it. But it's, you know, it just, some cities, some towns treasure, I mean, people get in trouble, you see it on the news all the time and that's not integrity. So, coming here, doing, you know, every day, doing your job and, you know, and being proud of what you do. So, I mean, just, that's what it is.
All right, thank you. Last question. Have you ever taken a resident-guided walk around town, whether it was the New Horizons manufactured housing or other places, a resident-guided walk, walkabout? Are you willing to learn about the problems that plague us as Huxley citizens? And so, I think we're back to Corey.
I've not done a resident-guided walk around. I've, I've lived in town a decade, I've ran a couple half-marathons and marathons, so I'm pretty sure I've covered every inch of Huxley, running around this town, but never been guided by anybody doing it. I'm definitely open to it. I think, well, we've all said it at some point tonight, but the purpose of a city council representative is to make sure that we're hearing what citizens want. So, if somebody is passionate about an issue and, and wants to invite us out to, to show us what the problem is or, or what they'd like us to be aware of, I'm definitely receptive to that.
Tracy, have you ever taken a resident-guided walk around town? New Horizons, manufactured housing, any section? Are you willing to learn about the problems that plague us as Huxley citizens?
Absolutely willing to take a resident-guided walk around town. I have not had a resident-guided walk around town. I have walked town, I've walked New Horizons, actually ride my bike through there. Not this year, okay? I didn't do it yet this year, it's pretty cold. But I think that's the only way you get feet on the ground, looking at what's actually happening, where you see the sidewalk issues, where you see the road issues. But absolutely willing, no, I have not in the past.
No, I think, I think all of us would be willing to do it, it's just, you know, making the time and, and having the residents or whoever needs to do it or whether it's the, you know, city staff wants us to come out and look with them. But we kinda had a self-guided Third Street tour there, they filled all the maps from Mr. Hoegler. I think that was great, had commentary with it and everything, I felt like he was right there talking to me. So, I'm willing to do it, so whatever the need is. I mean, the drainage issue we have out here on this new development, I used to farm some of that ground at one time, so I visually can see it and probably need to go out and look at some of those issues before we make a decision the next council meeting. So, no, I think it's very important.
Jacob?
I have also not been on a walk, but I, I would be very open to doing that. And the other thing, like campaigning, going to people's houses, knock, door knocking, is very interesting, cause you'll be in a different part of town and they'll be like, this is the issue I got here. And you'll just go out to the curb and they'll be like, see this road? And you're like, okay, okay. So, yeah, it would be very eye-opening, I think, to council to go on a tour like that.
All right. And I think we need to give the candidates a round of applause. That's the end of the question. Thank you all for a very informative meeting, thank you for all the audience questions. Before we conclude, I want to remind everyone to vote on March 26th, this is special election. You can register to vote on Election Day at the correct polling place of your address with proper ID or you can vote absentee in-person through March 25th, the day before, at the Story County Auditor's Office in Nevada from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. That's through March 25th. Thank you, candidates, for taking the time to share your views and for your commitment to serve. And thank you to all of you for actively participating in the election process. This concludes our candidate forum. Thank you.